June seventeenth meeting, if there was any audience, if you have a cellphone, if you would please put it in the silent mode, and if you'd like to speak on an issue, this pretty young lady up front, you can take the slip and give it to her. And you have, remind you only have three minutes to speak. So with that, Lloyd, you gonna lead us in our pledge?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Chris, could you give me a roll call?
Hey. Commissioner Wolf. Commissioner Rexstedt.
Here.
Commissioner Markarian.
Can't hear.
Commissioner Markarian.
Here.
Commissioner Philans. Commissioner Brazee.
Okay, I think there's a few people that have their microphones on, on the phone, and so if you're not talking, please mute it so that way the feedback doesn't carry through. Yeah, we'll, we'll probably.
Commissioner Wolf. Yeah. Commissioner Rexstedt. Commissioner Markarian. Commissioner Philans. They're not hearing us for some reason. Greg? Hang on. Can the commissioners exit the meeting and rejoin? We're not picking you up. Thank you. Should be four.
There was at least three.
Multiple people are now exiting.
Sorry, folks. Commissioners, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can, but you're coming kind of in and out.
Okay, I'm gonna have Ben do this, maybe it's my mic.
I believe so. We'll do it again, and then to reiterate, if you are on the phone and not.
Is now joining.
If you're on the phone and not speaking, make sure that the phone is muted that way, the reverb from that doesn't get carried through. And so we'll redo the roll call now that people are rejoining. And so we'll start with Commissioner Wolf. Commissioner Rexstedt is present. Commissioner Markarian.
Here.
Commissioner Philans.
Here.
Commissioner Brazee. Vice Chair Work.
Present.
And then Chair Algaar. So appears on the phone Commissioner Wolf and Brazee are not currently on the phone or did not respond. So they may log in and we'll have to.
Bart Brazee.
Oh, Brazee's here.
Is now joining.
To confirm Bart Brazee or Commissioner Brazee has joined, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, we are doing the roll call, and I appreciate the response. So, there we go. So only Commissioner Wolf has not logged in yet on the phone.
Ben?
No public comments were received on items not on the agenda. And then no public comments were mailed in via the city's email address as well. So no public comment at this time.
Okay. Then we need approval to consent agenda?
Yep, the minutes for May twentieth is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
Okay, we have our motion and a second. Have any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have, we don't have to do roll call?
That's right.
You have to give me a roll call?
Yeah, we'll have to do a roll call. I believe you took. Commissioner Wolf. Commissioner Rexstedt.
Here.
Yes.
Aye.
Commissioner Markarian.
Here.
Do you vote yes on the approval of the consent item?
Yes.
Commissioner Philans.
Aye.
Commissioner Brazee.
Yes.
Vice Chair Work.
Yes.
And then Chair Algaar.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, motion carried, as agenda. Okay, I guess we go on the first public. Item. Let's see, the AT&amp;T Wireless Conditional Use Permit.
It would be item number two, which is the City of Ekaipa seventeen oh nine three.
Where we at? I don't have one. Is it on the bottom? Oh, there it is, I didn't even see it. Okay. Okay, the City of Ekaipa seventeen dash oh nine three Development Agreement between the City of Ekaipa and the Woodside Homes.
Ben, that's correct. So this is a development agreement between the City of Ekaipa and Woodside Homes O S five, or O five S, to allow the development of approximately thirty-eight point six acres of property located within the Oakland Creek specific plan into a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-four single-family residential lots, with a minimum lot size of seventy-two hundred square feet, and construction of related public improvements, including a public park within said specific plan. Now, I'll try to go through just quickly as some history on the project. So this development agreement is specific to a portion within the Oakland Creek specific plan. The Oakland Creek specific plan was a long-term guide for the development of the project site and was designed to accommodate three major components. One was up to two hundred single-family lots with seventy-two hundred square feet minimum lot size, or conforming to the city's RS seventy-two C land use district, open space district, which also included the Wilson Three Basin project, and then also native open space and recreational amenities. And then there was also provision for two different innovation districts, one which would include the city yard facility south of the Wildwood Cavalry Chapel. This project was reviewed and recommended by the Plan Commission on November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, and then ultimately adopted by the city council in February twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. And then provided for reference on the PowerPoint is the land use plan showing or delineating the different land uses within it. South of Oakland Road is the, and adjacent to Second Street is where the single-family residential use component is, the open space corresponding with the Wilson Three Basin project, and then the two innovation district areas as well. As part of the November fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting, the Plan Commission also reviewed and recommended action on tentative tract map two zero one three zero, which is designed consistent with Oakland Creek specific plan for a hundred and forty-four single-family lots, one lot for the city yard facility, so lot one forty-five, and then also featured letter lots associated to connect to the basin and letter lots for landscaping. So this tract map has already been reviewed by the Plan Commission and recommended for approval, however, we did provide an exhibit of the tract map for the commission's reference on kind of the, the site layout as well. No major changes since the two thousand and seventeen approval has occurred, the map remains within substantial conformance. However, just as a quick note, kind of one change that did happen to the map was changing the location of the parkway from curb adjacent to interior, to allow a little bit more space for landscaping yards, and then having the sidewalk adjacent to the street. So that's pretty much the only major design change, but still within substantial conformance with the original approval from Plan Commission. Now, this project specifically is for a development agreement associated with the subdivision, and so this is a development agreement between the city and Woodside Homes. Purpose of the development agreement is to provide expectations for the development and try and encourage public and private participation in the comprehensive land use planning process to reduce economic risk of development. Now, as part of the Plan Commission's review and purview of this is ensuring compliance with the general plan and then any other land use requirements, and so this project does support the general plan and then the specific plan by actually implementing the Oakland Creek specific plan and providing or helping to facilitate the development of that residential component, as well as the basin component as well. And then for reference of the draft, development agreement is provided for the commission's review and recommendation, and then the tract map and the development agreement will ultimately be provided to city council for final action. Did want to highlight as part of the development agreement that was provided, there are a few minor changes that will be included as part of the language before it goes to city council, and I will just list these very quickly. One is as part of the responsibilities, installation of a new traffic signal at Oakland Road and Second Street was listed on page five, item N dash V. However, this project is actually under, has already been awarded contract by the city as a result of some federal grant funds that the city received, and so the city will actually be responsible for that, and that will be removed from the development agreement. Secondly, the language regarding the statewide community infrastructure program on page sixteen will also be amended a little bit to reflect some of the, some changes to that and some school fee to referral and financing amounts, and so that will be modified a little bit to add a little bit more flexibility for the use of this program. On the demification language on page nineteen will also be revised based on an adjustment to the project schedule that may omit some of the need for that language that was in place in the DA. I did want to also note exhibits A and B on, the exhibit will be clarified to represent kind of two different components. So one, one that parcels is currently owned by the city, the other parcel within the tentative map is owned by the county flood control district, and will become surplus land with the basin three, or the Wilson Three Basin project. And so it is not very clear on the exhibit that one of those parcels is already owned by the city, and then one is being facilitated through that surplus property component. And then the final element is exhibit G, some of the timelines will be modified as well. The finalized land transfer agreement to developer will happen no later than November third. The old city yard relocation will be completed by November third, two thousand and twenty. The award of contract for the basin channel will be done by October twelfth, two thousand and twenty. New city yard rating will be completed forty-five working days after that award of contract. And then the city export and stop pile will start thirty days after the contract award as well, and then no later than November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. And so these are just minor changes, most of these are actually, I think, beyond the Plan Commission's purview of the development agreement, but at least wanted to provide those details as well, as those may be changed before it goes to city council. Now, as part of the Oakland Creek specific plan, the EIR was prepared pursuant to the SEQA guidelines. The EIR did determine that all potentially significant impacts could be mitigated, so there was no statement of overriding considerations that were required. And then the EIR also included a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. As part of the tentative map, as well as the development agreement, subsequent projects are able to utilize the EIR pursuant to section fifteen one six eight of the SEQA guidelines, so no new or subsequent SEQA document is required. This falls within the, the EIR that was prepared as consistent with that project, and so no additional analysis is required pursuant to state law. And then the conditions of approval for the subsequent projects, including the tract map, includes references to those applicable EIR mitigation measures as well. So the mitigation monitoring plan and the conditions ensure the check on that those measures are indeed adhered to and completed, and so the city has been working on meeting those requirements as well. And so with that, staff does recommend that the city council, or recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council that they approve and adopt ordinance number three ninety-five, which implements the development agreement, determine that the project is within the scope of the EIR for the Oakland Creek specific plan, and then to file a notice of determination reiterating as such. So with that, that does conclude my presentation. For me, is also available to answer questions as well, and then the Woodside Home representatives are also in the audience and happy to answer any questions as well.
Anyone have any questions for staff at this time?
The, the portion of the, where the park and everything, it's, isn't there gonna be a lake? Is that right?
So the Wilson Three Basin project does feature a light component as part of how that basin is designed.
And that's the whole, that's not this, not, not where the homes are, but it's adjacent to it?
Yeah, it's further south on that.
Okay.
And so there'll be a part feature adjacent to where the basin is, they'll utilize that amenity as a resource for, for recreation, and so the Woodset Homes would be a part of that component, but not the basin or the light.
For me, there will be a traffic light at both the entrance at Sunnyside and Second Street?
I think there's already a light at Sunnyside.
Yeah.
There's already an existing traffic signal at Sunnyside, so that will be modified to incorporate the southerly approach, and the city is actually using federal grant funding that we obtained a couple years ago to construct the traffic signal at Oakland Road and Second Street. That contract was awarded by the city council a few months ago, so right now we're just waiting for the delivery of the traffic signal pole so we can complete that construction. And that is, is a mitigation requirement for the Oakland, for the specific plan that Ben referenced.
Just curiosity, with those lights being so close, are they synchronized or somehow?
They will be, yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for staff? Okay, would applicant like to make a presentation? Nope. Okay. Then, public comments, Ben?
We did receive one public comment slip for David Noble.
Right, right over there.
Just stay your name and half for the records.
David Noble. Name and?
Address, it's fine.
Three five one oh two Pimmin.
Thank you, sir.
My lot backs up to the open space on here. So maybe my question was already asked, the open space area that's south of Oakland Creek, is that part of this development, or that happens at a future time? That open space sits at the large one that's at the bottom of that map? This area right here?
Yes.
So that is part of the Wilson Three Basin project, so that's a city project that will be being completed at, at the same time or concurrently.
Can I ask a question about that, part of the development?
Is that part of the development, or is that gonna be retention basin?
Is why don't be part of the development? Sorry, I didn't follow.
So, as was asked, there is, if you look at the plan that's online, you can see it says there's a lake there. Is that actually a lake that holds water, or it's a detention basin that will have water sometimes and not other times like the, it's a detention basin that's east of Bryant Street?
And that will be.
I think it's gonna be similar to like you see at the lakes, where the water will be there on a regular, you know.
Rainy season?
Pardon?
During the rainy season?
Yeah. Well, it'll, it'll be there year-round, from what I understand. It'll be there year-round.
What was presented to us was that it was going to be a lake all the time in the park, and there would be like trails.
There'll be no body contact with the water.
Sure.
Yeah, right, but.
So that would be different than the detention basin that's east of Oakland, of Bryant Street?
Right.
That's dry most of the time?
Right.
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 Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ben, do we have any other public comments?
No, none on this item.
Okay. So we'll just close the public hearing and move to discussion by the commissioners.
Just a point here, Ben, so we're, we're recommending the development agreement and this map, is that right?
So the map has already been recommended before, and so this will tie into it, and then when it goes before city council, the map and the development agreement will be considered with their action.
Okay.
Lloyd? Okay, do we have comments from Bart?
No comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, my only comment is, in reviewing the packet we received, apparently when this was done in two thousand and seventeen, a lot of residents had concerns about notice and input, and if any such notice was given this time around to make sure the people that would be affected are interested in having their voices heard, have been given the opportunity to be heard.
I apologize, it sounded like you cut out a little bit, but I guess to confirm, the question is, were those people around the project renoticed so that if they had comments, they were able to, to do so, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so the project was renoticed pursuant to our city's requirements for noticing, so that did go out for the notice of public hearing. As also noted in the staff report, most of the comments that had been previously received were addressed as part of the project design, some of the modifications such as the light feature that was added into the Oakland Creek specific plan, or as part of the EIR that was prepared for the project and ultimately adopted. I also did want to just quickly touch on the findings for the project, for the development agreement are located on page fifteen of the staff report. And then as part of the project, the findings that were previously recommended by Plan Commission are on page fourteen of the agenda report as well.
Okay, Kathy?
Do you know, do you know when, when the notice was sent for today's hearing?
The notices were sent at least ten days prior to the meeting, and then there was also a posting in the news mirror as well.
All right, the only reason I say that is because a lot of people were concerned for not having enough time to submit input last time, for having fourteen days. So I would have liked to probably have given people maybe a thirty day or so notice. I know we are required to only give ten, but just to get more support and satisfy those concerns that have been brought up. With that being said, is what we're looking at today, the same thing as two thousand and seventeen, or any changes were made to it?
So this project is specifically for the development agreement associated with the tentative map that was previously recommended, as noted in the presentation, the only real change to the map was the modification of the sidewalk location within the interior streets. I did want to touch, I guess, quickly, so as part of the notice of public hearing, that does require a ten-day notice, and then for the ordinance, it included the posting in the news mirror as well, so that does meet state requirements. As part of the project that went through, the, the two-week notice that you referenced is a project notice that the city provides in excess of state requirements for public noticing, and then further, the EIR that was posted for a forty-five day public comment period as well, when that was under review in two thousand and seventeen as well. So there were a few number of opportunities for that public comment. As part of the EIR, there was also a scoping meeting that was done that also provided an opportunity for public comment on the proposed specific plan as well.
All right, the only reason I bring that up is because just reviewing all these letters, it seems like a lot of people are very interested in this project and against it or have concerns, and, and I wanted to make sure that those have been addressed, so we don't face a backlash later on for ignoring any input. That's all.
Okay, Kathy, you have anyone to weigh in on?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So if anybody doesn't have any other, do we have any kind of a motion?
Well, I would make a motion that we recommend the city council adopt the ordinance three nine five approving the development agreement between the city and Woodside Homes as part of the proposed project, and determine that the subdivision and development agreement are within the scope of the EIR that was already previously prepared. And direct staff to notice a file of, to notice, a notice of determination.
You get that, all that? Okay, do we have a second?
I can tap one.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, with that, do we have any further discussions? Here and none, all those in favor?
I'll do a roll call.
Do you do a roll call?
Yep. All right, Commissioner Wolf? All right, Commissioner Wolf? Commissioner Rettstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Markarian?
Aye.
Commissioner Furlands?
Aye.
Commissioner Brzee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Work?
Aye.
And Chair Oggauer?
Aye.
So we have a... An approval?
Yep.
Motion carries. Okay. Next one, item on the agenda is the AT&amp;T Wireless, case number twenty dash thirty-three, a CUP. Mr. Herr, are you gonna take this one?
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. The applicant AT&amp;T Wireless has submitted to us item number three, which is case number twenty dash zero three three, which is a conditional use permit to construct an unmanned telecommunications facility within a three hundred and sixty-two square foot fenced lease area for AT&amp;T Wireless. Uh, the project consists of twelve antennas, thirty-six remote radio units, a seventy-four foot tall, uh, tower designed as a eucalyptus tree and associated ground mounted equipment. Uh, the new telecommunications facility is to be located adjacent to an existing telecommunications facility at the northeast portion of the Crafton Hills College campus at one one seven one one Sand Canyon Road. The project site is located, uh, at the northeast, uh, portion of the Crafton Hills campus. Uh, it is between Sand Canyon Road and Campus Drive, uh, which is just north of Ukaipa Boulevard. Uh, the, the subject property is zoned as institutional and it is surrounded with the natural open space and other institutional uses. Uh, and it is improved as a school facility and is over a hundred and sixty-six, a hundred and seventy-six acres. Uh, the nearest residential development is over three thousand feet, uh, to the southwest of the project site. The proposed, uh, uh, facility will be located well within all the required setbacks with the nearest, uh, property line being seven hundred and seventy-one feet east to the eastern property line. Uh, it is adjacent to the existing telecommunications facility. It should be noted that, that, uh, the Development Code encourages the co-location of existing cell towers. However, the, uh, the existing tower that is, that is there, uh, the way it was designed is to construct it out of wood and so it wouldn't be able to support the, uh, the new equipment that would be located onto that tower. Uh, and if the, and if the structure were able to support that equipment, uh, due to spacing requirements because of the, uh, the disruption of services, if it's too close in proximity to existing services, uh, they would have to significantly increase the, uh, the height of the tower. And so that's why they are proposing to do a separate tower that is adjacent to it. The tower will be designed to, uh, to mimic the appearance of a eucalyptus tree and it will be a monopole. Uh, the proposed tower will be seventy-four feet in height. The land use district, uh, institutional land use district allows for a maximum height of seventy-five feet and will be branched as three, at three four, three point four branches per foot and will be finished with a bark, uh, texture finish. It will have three sectors with sock coverings that include twelve antennas and thirty-six remote radio units. Uh, all of the ground mounted equipment will be located within a three hundred and sixty-two, uh, square foot equipment enclosure. Uh, the equipment enclosure itself will be fenced in with an eight foot tall chain link fence with privacy slats. And then the tower itself, uh, will be surrounded with a eight foot tall, uh, wrought iron fence that surrounds the mono yook tower. This is the propagation max showing the, the, the current level of service, uh, before the site and this is what it would be, uh, after the site. Uh, the green being the desirable, uh, level of service that they would like to achieve. These are the, uh, photo simulations that the applicant has provided to us. Uh, this is to give an idea of what it will look like. Uh, you can see the, the tower that's sitting right next to it that is existing. And this is a view looking up of the, at the existing tower. Uh, no public comments were received, uh, and at, and at this time, uh, staff, staff, uh, recommends that the Planning Commission review the design and location of the proposed telecommunications facility and if it's acceptable, approve the project with recommendations A through D. And staff is open for questions.
Okay, with no public comments, anybody have any questions for staff? Yeah, I have a question for you there, Travis. How many antennas are normally on a tower like that?
Typically, the, I mean, the ones that I've come across, they typically, twelve is kind of the common one?
Typically, what would they be?
Twelve antennas is kind of a, a typical amount for, for, uh, for a carrier?
Yeah, normally they're set up in a, the, the triangular configuration, so they'll have three different sectors with four antennas on that tower or for that individual carrier and then they'll maybe have the radio remote units behind it or the radio dish as well, um, depending on the configuration needs of that service. But the design itself for this antenna is, uh, comparable to other cell towers within the city or the other carriers.
And is there any kind of a maintenance agreement on the, on the grounds around the tower? Or that's just wind up a weed patch?
So the maintenance itself, um, the carrier itself is responsible for the lease area on the subject property where their equipment is located. And so areas outside of that lease area is not necessarily part of their, uh, negotiations with the property owner, but certainly the Planning Commission, if there's other elements that they would like to see, um, maintained on the site for, as part of the CUP, they can certainly do so. But the carrier normally is, is setting up where they go, my equipment location is here, my cell tower is here. If I'm going to have any other land steeping that's proposed, they're responsible for that, but that's usually the extent of what they negotiate with the underlying property owner.
Okay.
And there's no, um, no way to eliminate the wooden one when putting this one up, is that what you said? They couldn't co-locate on the new one? I understand that the old one was not adequate as far as being able to handle the weight, but the new one couldn't take what the old one is holding.
Uh, so you're saying if, to, if they were to take down the old tower and then to just co-locate on the, the new tower?
Right.
Uh, it would require a significant height increase to be able to make the equipments?
How high is the one that's there?
Seventy-six feet.
Seventy-six.
So they had spoken because there's two carriers already on the existing tower. And so to have the distance requirement for the, the bandwidth or whatever it is, between that they had spent it on, it was a considerably taller tower. And so instead, it made more sense to do a secondary tower and then have this also provide co-location ability. So if ultimately all the carriers are up in that location, no additional, you know, behemoth of a tower is required instead. And so this would more easily facilitate.
I don't think I've seen very much, at least come to us, that had to do with co-locating. It's like everybody wants their own tower, everybody has to have their own tower, so it's like...
The co-location itself would not require any Planning Commission approval though.
Okay.
So if there's a minor increase in height, there may be, to do a co-location, they'll have a land use to plan. It's federal law that kind of limits the abilities review on some of that. But if it's below, um, the height or there's no increase in height for the ta- uh, tower, then it's just a, a ministerial building permit process for that. And then there may be some sort of review if there's a separate lease area that's established. But yeah, it's pretty, um, the Planning Commission will not review the co-location requests.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, any other questions from commissioners? Discussion?
You know, I think the issue of, um, grounds maintenance, uh, we've had this discussion with almost every one of these that we've, that we've approved. And I, I think it's important that that be a consideration, whether it's a, a condition or not, I'm not going there. But it needs to be something that is really more than just an understanding that the, the utility, in this case AT&amp;T Wireless, that they know that it, it's not going to turn into a bramble patch up there. Because, I mean, there's no place in town that we want something to look messy and we've got, we don't want weeds everywhere.
I, I do think up on this hillside though, it's going to be subject to the county, um, for weed abatement. I mean, you know, because this is a high fire danger area, so I'm fairly certain that they'd have to keep it cut down. Then I think, isn't that correct?
So it would be subject for weed abatement activities if, if that's an issue. I do want to note, as shown on kind of the images as well, so there's quite a few different pieces of equipment in that location. So there's certainly the water tower associated with the water company. There's also the other existing ta- uh, tower that's there. And then there's also some other associate kind of, uh, tran- uh, telecommunications equipment on there. So if you look at the image, you see the cell tower, but directly adjacent to it is some other equipment as well. So there's quite a few different, um, individual or, you know, companies using that space. And so they all, I think, would have vested interest to ensure that.
And we have done that in the past in certain areas where it's sensitive. We've had, uh, a screening put up, you know, or, or, uh, other trees that are similar or planted near it. But I don't think that this location would require any of that.
In this particular case, it's not like it's right in the middle, but a lot of these towers, they put them, you know, they're visible to people and there is no maintenance and the county comes by and issues weed abatement, you know? Okay, after weed abatement, again, you got a weed patch. And I'd just like to see somehow we put something in there, who's going to be responsible for it, you know? So maybe this is something Travis can go out and take care of on a regular basis?
Get my lawnmower out.
Okay, this is a suggestion, that's all. Okay, we have any motions here?
We do need to open the public hearing. We don't have any slips and then the applicant is also here as well.
Oh, the applicant? Oh, okay, I didn't know we had an applicant here. Did you want to come up and say something? Okay. Well, we tried.
Now, public comment.
Now, hey, we have any, any motions?
So we have no public comment, so we're closing.
We have no public comments.
We're closing.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the installation of, uh, this antenna.
Well, I will second the motion for case number two zero zero three three for a CUP. And, uh, Planning Commission, the public hearing recommendations A through D.
Okay, we have a, we need a roll call, Ben?
Oh, there a roll call? Commissioner Wolf? Commissioner Rettstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Markarian?
Aye.
Commissioner Furlands?
Aye.
Commissioner Brzee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Work?
Aye.
And Chair Oggauer?
Aye. Motion carries. We got another cell tower.
Okay, item number four, Pacific Horizon Builders, case number twenty zero four zero, review to the previous approved tentative tract map. Who's taking that? For me, you gonna take that?
You got me again.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. The applicant, Pacific Horizon Builder, has submitted to us case number twenty dash zero four zero, which is revision, uh, to the previously approved tentative tract map nineteen nine oh one, which was case number fourteen dash one thirty-eight. Uh, A, which is a twenty-two lot, single family residential subdivision. Uh, revisions to the project includes the installation of a six foot tall PVZ fence in lieu of a six foot tall block wall and the architecture review for all twenty-two lots. The project site is located, uh, between, between Douglas and Fremont Streets, uh, south of Avenue D and north of Avenue E. Uh, the, the subject property is twelve point three three acres in size and is zoned as single residential RS twenty M, uh, which means that each individual lot would need to be a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet. Uh, previous actions, on September sixteenth, twenty fifteen, the Planning Commission approved case number fourteen dash one thirty-eight for a, uh, twenty-one lot, single family subdivision, uh, with a lettered lot for drainage purposes and a not apart lot, uh, improved with the residence. Uh, the, the, at that time, uh, the project was approved for a perimeter block wall. Um, after that, uh, September sixteenth hearing, a developer acquired the not apart law and, and, uh, and added the lots onto the treaded, onto the, uh, a part of the tentative tract map, which increased the overall lots, uh, from twenty-one lots to twenty-two lots. Uh, this change, however, did not require Planning Commission approval, uh, because it was within substantial conformance with what was approved. The overall site plan, uh, the twenty-two lots are a minimum of twenty thousand square feet that has a road that, that bisects the property, so allows for connectivity between Douglas and Fremont Streets. Uh, there is drainage easements along the north and south property lines, uh, and then there is a reduced, uh, uh, parkway right of way as part of the city's traffic calming program. Revisions to the, the projects, uh, the original projects, uh, drainage wise, it had individual rain gardens on each individual lots. Uh, those have since been removed in favor of, uh, of increasing the detention basin on the lettered lots. Uh, the increase to the, to the, uh, to the detention basin at the southwest, uh, portion of the development uh, will result in no net change in the drainage capacity. Uh, and then also the revision was the installation of a six foot tall PVZ fence, uh, in lieu of the deck, of the block wall, as well as, uh, an addition of a five foot tall split rail fence that backs up to the edge of the, uh, of the building area of the, um, the individual lots. Uh, the block wall, uh, is, is still proposed on the, on lots that are adjacent to the, uh, public thoroughfares along, uh, Fremont and Douglas Streets. Uh, the, the changes are limited to the north and south, uh, property lines. Uh, there is no specific requirement for a perimeter, uh, CMU block wall. However, because at this, uh, Planning Commission, uh, meeting, it was presented a- as a block wall, uh, that this revision does require approval from the Planning Commission. Here is a rendering of, of what the easement will look like. Uh, it will be improved with, uh, with rip, rip ramp, uh, throughout the basin and then we'll have the, uh, the PVZ fence as well as the split rail fence at the edge of the lots. So another view of the easements. Uh, architectural review, uh, so all lots, uh, will be single story and they will range in size from two thousand three hundred fifty-eight square feet to two thousand eight hundred nineteen square feet. Uh, the height of the, uh, units will range from twenty feet, six inches to twenty-three feet, five inches, uh, and they will feature, uh, two to three car garages. Uh, the, the elevations utilize various textures and color materials such as horizontal and vertical lap siding, uh, stone veneer, shutters and stucco to give, uh, several different looks for the building. Uh, in total, there are nine distinct, uh, looks for the units. This is looking from, uh, from Fremont Streets, looking west. This is from Douglas Street, looking east. Uh, this is, this is a photo of just kind of the, some of like the existing, uh, conditions of the property. Uh, public comments, there, uh, eighty-seven notices were sent to the surrounding property owners within a three hundred foot radius, uh, and, uh, uh, of the project sites. And twelve written comments were received. Uh, re- uh, the first one relating to traffic and the creation of additional lot would generate additional traffic. Uh, it, it should be noted that when the project notices were mailed out originally, uh, the, it noted the revision to the process, uh, to the project included the creation of an additional lot from twenty-one to twenty-two. However, that was incorrect, um, as the project was already approved for the twenty-two lots, as it was already within substantial conformance and that was approved by the Community and Development Director. Um, the current proposed revisions are for the alterations to the proposed drainage, changes to the perimeter fencing and architectural zoo for all twenty-two lots only. Uh, the project is consistent with the city's, uh, general plan land use element, which is integrated with the transportation elements. Uh, the project, uh, was modeled utilizing land use element to determine the appropriate roadway facilities. Uh, as such, both Douglas and Fremont Streets are planned to provide for adequate, uh, vehicle capacity. Uh, additionally, as part of the city's, uh, traffic calming program, the parkway, uh, right of way, uh, will be reduced from fifteen feet to eleven feet. And then stop signs will also be stalled, uh, at the ends of both streets, uh, that bisect the project. Um, the second, the second concern, main concern was the, was the, uh, access to that easement and the potential for people to get in and damage, uh, or, or ruin the easement and, or the fencing. Um, a fifteen foot easement, uh, access easement has been provided a lot behind lots nine and ten at the northeasterly portion of the project site to allow for proper maintenance of the drainage channel. Uh, public access to the drainage easement will be strictly prohibited. Uh, another concern was the height of the homes. Uh, uh, at the previous Planning Commission, uh, meeting, uh, one of the main concerns was about privacy and whether or not, if the homes were going to be, uh, two story or one story, they agreed to make lot twenty-one to be, uh, single story. to be single-story. And then the last, the last, the last concern was the fencing materials and that the proposed PVC fence will deteriorate over time. The applicant is establishing a lighting and landscape maintenance, uh, maintenance district will be formed as part of this project, and that will be in charge of maintaining that easement and the fence within it. And at this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the, the revisions to tentative tract map nineteen nine oh one, and if they're acceptable, approve the, the project subject to the conditions of approval and recommendations A through D. And at this time, staff is open for questions.
Okay, at this time, any questions for staff? You know, Travis, you showed that one photo where you had split-rail fence, and then the other side was a solid fence? So what's, one side will be split, the other?
Correct, correct. The PVC fence will be on the edge of that, that drainage easement, and then you'll have the, the split-rail fence that backs up the edge of like the lots.
Oh, okay.
So this is essentially the edge of, of the, the backyards for the, for the residents.
Okay, and for me, what is the garden, you know, retention basin versus a regular retention basin? Is there any one that's beneficial more than another?
No, it, it's, it depends on the drainage study, the hydrology study that's done for the development. Both are, are considered eligible BMPs as part of the WQMP, the Water Quality Management Plan for the project. So it, it's.
Is this preference?
There's no, no preference. It's, it's, again, it's based on the developer, property owner, and then the hydrology study that's done.
Okay.
I thought we had that. Is this the one that came up and then there were some problems with those little rain garden things that wasn't really recommended that we use them? That might have been another project, but we ended up, we ended up putting a bigger detention basin on that one too, rather than the rain gardens, I think. That's several years ago. So the LLMD will be responsible for maintaining the fence? Is that right? Or which fencing?
The.
The LLMD will, will, the outside fence, the solid one? And then the, the split-rail one is actually on the lots themselves? Is that how that works?
There, both of them are actually, both fences are on the lots, and I believe the applicant is here, and he will be able to provide, provide additional information on that.
All right, thanks.
Okay, if there's no more questions, the applicant here would like to step down, please.
Yes, the applicant actually has a presentation.
Beg pardon?
The applicant actually has a presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
Very quickly, I did want to touch on two comments for the project as well. One, so the project that was previously approved, as Travis mentioned, was for twenty-one lots plus a not apart lot, so it was a net of twenty-two lots. And so that's why remaining that twenty-two total homes remains within substantial conformance. And I also did want to note real quickly that as part of the original approval, a MND was approved and adopted as part of the CEQA findings for that project. And so this project does remain within the CEQA determination that happened before.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Ben. That's good information. The applicant could state his name and address for our records?
My name is Dave Klein. My address is four twenty North Main Street, Suite one oh four dash two oh four, in Corona, California. One of the things that you guys talked about was the rain garden versus the, the retention basin. When I had a meeting, you know, several months ago on this, the city was for getting rid of the, you know, the, the rain gardens because it is actually a maintenance item that the city has to enforce after the homes are sold, that the people don't destroy the rain gardens to, you know, and destroy the flow of water, okay? So the city, from what I was told when Paul Toomey was there, the city's not really equipped to do that, that, that policing of every lot. So when I suggested to make the retention basin bigger and get rid of all that, that was very widely accepted, you know. That's one of the reasons that we changed it. We would, we would have kept it, you know, the cost is about the same, but the burden to the city is less because they don't have to check each lot to make sure each one of those rain gardens are still operable. And according to the state, the WQMP, it's up to the city to enforce that. So they don't have that means to do that, so that's why they welcomed the retention basin. And that's why we increased the size of it, okay? As far as the fence, if you want to put up that one picture, little confusion. That's the fence I put up like about ten years ago, but, but, but the backyard one. You got one there? The, the area one would be better.
Yes.
Okay. The, the property along actually goes back to that back fence, okay? That is part of the property, okay? On the both north and south side, they have these blue streams, or the, you know, when rain hits, that's, that's what, that's when the water hits. The requirement for a block wall was only on the north side of property. On the south side of property, there is no requirement for a block wall on the, on the original tentative tract map, okay?
So the north side?
Is only the one that, north side of the project is the only requiring a block wall. South side is not.
Okay, why was that?
I have no idea. I wasn't involved in that decision.
Do you remember? Okay.
I mean, I have no idea what, I bought the tract map the way it was.
I seem to recall when that project went through, there were a few property owners at the north-east kind of corner that, that were concerned about the block wall or having a fence. And so the applicant at the time, I think, said that they would make that concession as part of that, that question.
Right. Now, in doing this, we wanted to keep more like a park atmosphere throughout the whole project, because this is going down both sides, the north and south side, and this gives it appeal. I have a, I have a, did you download that, the, the video? So what we're doing for our homeowners, this is a lot better for them to come in the backyard and see this and a bunch of bushes and shrubs, because that was what was presented to keep the natural there, and just put a couple riffraff bases there. This was never, you know, proposed. I want to just do this on the north and south side. One of the reasons I want to get rid of the block wall because it comes cost prohibitive for me to put all this rock in if I got to put that block wall in. And it's only on just the north side. We're trying to keep a copacetic look throughout the project to match everything that's up there. Also, there was a, there, there was a question about block, about PVC, you know, breaking down stuff. This PVC, if you, like gave up, has a lifetime warranty on it. Your, your vinyl fencing has gone a long ways the last twenty years. It ain't like it was twenty years ago. This is lifetime warranty, gets chipping, flaking, breaking, cracking, cracking or fading. And plus, it has a, plus, we're going to put a hundred and ten mile-an-hour rating fence up there. They got seventy miles an hour, ninety miles an hour, and we're putting a hundred and ten mile-an-hour. So that's kind of where we're at with that. And the homeowners, as far as this irrigation stuff in here, there will be, there will be a, a drip system put in that would be, that would be part of the homeowner to, to maintain, okay? To keep, you know, to keep the growth back there.
Well, what's the, I mean, the LLMD supposed to do then? Isn't that what that usually takes care of?
Well, the LLMD is going to be set up for the, for the, for the lighting course and for the retention basin.
Well, it's, it's lighting landscaping.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and the landscaping part, I guess that's what I'm saying. It's on the homeowner.
This is kind of landscape-free, okay? Because what we do is we put an emergence into the soil, but doesn't allow any weeds and stuff to, to come up, okay? And so basically, this is big rock, you know, it's like a river type of flow. So this is almost maintenance-free.
Okay, what are you talking about with the drip system then? What's that?
Just for, just for the plants and stuff down there. We plant and planting it with little shrubs.
Right, right. And you said that the, that the homeowner would be responsible for that?
Yeah, when we, when we do the sprinkler system aside, the stuff for the front, we do a drip system for the hillsides in the back. That's part of our, that's part of our, our scope of work. Any hillside, anything like this, we have to, we have to landscape it and ma, and maintain it as far as with the sprinkler system, and that's incurred, the cost incurred by, you know, by the homeowner. So if we have a hill, like we've got several problems that hills coming down, you know, or steps down, that is all maintained and landscaped by the developer until he signs it over to the homeowner.
And the lighting, I guess I thought that was what LLMD was for.
Lighting?
Yeah.
And if there's a, if there's a common area that needed it, this is not common. Each one of the homeowners owned that part.
Okay.
So it's not a common area.
Okay. They might say, oh, I don't own that. It's, there's no, my fence stops here, you know? They've got their side yard fences.
Clearly instructed within our, you know, with, you know, you know, within our purchase and sales agreement. I think they'd much rather look at this in their backyard than if you could show those pictures of the ones I sent you today up there. Yeah, this is what you would see in your backyard. This is all, if I do exactly what the tenant tract map does, there's no improvement for those streams. All there is a couple little riffraff that go down there, and you put a fence up. That's it. So, and you can show a couple more. This is, this is what it's going to look like.
Can you scroll up and show it?
Because it's designated.
Yeah, this, like, this is right in the stream area here, okay? So we want to make it have more like a park setting, more like what you guys have out front here, in front of your building here. You have those little, maybe ten streams with the rock and stuff in it. We want to put something like that, because we actually want our homeowners to buy our homes.
Right.
And I think as a homeowner, they're going to much rather want to look at that than look at this in their backyard.
Okay, so this.
Because where that PVC sensing is going, that's where it's going to start.
Right. I understand what you're, where you're coming from. I, I, I want to know, is this designated open space?
No, the, the previously approved tentative tract map identified this as a drainage easement. So it, it is, it is not dedicated open space, but it is a drainage easement that will, the maintenance will be the responsibility of the property owner.
Okay, so it wasn't designated to be open for any kind of habitat or anything like that?
No.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you. That's fine.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is it possible to consider a block wall, but infaze it, so you can save on the cost and recoup some of it as you build some of these units?
What?
Phase it, he said.
Well, actually, 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 I would get more of a discount doing it all at one time than a little bit at a time, because the cost will, that's cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't work.
Well.
It's like if you go out and get a bike.
Can we?
Go ahead.
Can we wait for us to do it at a further stage rather than doing a vinyl now?
I, I think the decision has to be made tonight, Chris. I don't think we can try and phase it somehow.
So the, the applicant would be installing the perimeter fencing as part of the development of the subdivision. So once they finish building the subdivision, the fence would be, have to be in place. So they wouldn't be able to not install a fence and then come back later and do a block wall. That, I don't think would save money, but they, once they have turned over the properties to the private ownership, their responsibility for that project is done other than any builder warranties that are associated with the development. But they would not come back later to do other site improvements once they are done.
One thing that we do do is, once we get grading done and the streets in, the very first thing we put up is all the perimeter fencing to secure our job site.
Sure, right.
Last one, we don't do our cross sensing, and we don't do our, our side fencing until, until the last, okay? But, but the perimeter fencing, the block wall, the vinyl, everything goes up to give the, the job closure.
We do have block walls on both ends, right?
The block walls will still be on Douglas and Fremont. And also, there's a little bit mistake. We are going to put a block wall around the, around the retention basin. We're not, we're not proposing PVC there. So around the retention basin, we are going to have a block wall around that.
Okay, any other?
All right, that was my only thing, is if we could find a middle, middle ground, basically, between all the concerns of the people that are again, or the vinyl wall, and in favor of a block wall, these neighbors will always be looking at this fence on that property. So try and see if there's any other potential middle way that we can meet everyone in the middle.
Well, we're putting, he's putting a block wall around the retention basin, and then there'll be a vinyl fence, a solid vinyl fence, the neighbors' backyards.
Yes. Also, what the.
Yeah, that they don't, that they don't like, apparently.
What's there now?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Yeah, but from what I read in the, in the letters submitted, is when you do have this beautiful project, which sounds like it's going to be nice homes on, one of the concern is aesthetics, but the second is the value. The vinyl fencing is going to have a different, attract different buyers and block decorative walls, something that can look better and look better.
Man, next comment on that?
Those are just concerns that I read in the letter. That's why I'm bringing them up.
I just built a project out in Los Air, eight, eight hundred fifty thousand dollar homes, half-acre to one-acre lots, all have vinyl. All of them have been sold out. Also, the advantage of vinyl, one is we're putting a hundred and ten mile-an-hour rating fence up. That's even more than a CMU wall, if you look at the rating. CMU wall is rated for one hundred miles an hour, okay? Also graffiti, graffiti free. Anything happens to graffiti, this wipes right off. When you have a CMU wall, graffiti, you got to repaint it, it starts looking ugly, you know? And, you know, even though you can, you can't get the paint right again, you know, so this is graffiti, you know, free. So I've had people do, you know, graffiti on the vinyl. We just take a little acetone, wipes right off.
Okay, any other commissioners have questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, seeing none. Ben, do we have any public comments?
We have one public comment slip from Jacob Yar.
Oh, this is right here.
No, it's a different, Jacob Yarin?
Yarin.
Okay. David, could you step back, then we'll see if you can.
Yeah, my name's Jacob Yarin. I live at the corner of Fremont and D, right there, one, two, three, five, six Fremont Street.
You're on the corner of?
Fremont and D.
Fremont and E, okay.
D.
D, D.
As in dog.
So you're on the other side of the wash.
My lot is the only lot in that whole thing that he totally encircles me. So I am on the south side of the, like, right there, you can see my roof. I'm on the south side. My house is originally there since nineteen ten. So I have, you know, my buildings are right up against his property lines. And his vinyl fence is going to go, you know, like literally down the side of my garage and across the back of my, like, my structures that I have. So I mean, the whole fire, all that stuff, it's, it's going to be right on me. Do you have the lot plan?
Yeah.
So his access, his proposed access, fifteen-foot access, goes through there. What's to stop, you know, these residents right here from driving their Jeep or something through this nice landscape back that he's provided for them, instead of, you know, how it is, it's all rugged, whatever? What's, you know, what's going to stop people from using that to access their yards now?
I do envision.
And, you know, they're saying the block wall on the north face, that, that's, that whole upper side, just for privacy. You guys, you have Chapman Heights and all these other projects and you type in that, that's kind of like how you've split up the homes and, you know, divided all these projects is with the cinder block wall. So it's, you know, I could, I talk to most of my neighbors, that's just what you guys have already been doing. That's why, you know, that was their concern, the north side. The south side, all the water from your project drains that way, so I understand why he thinks here for his water collection. But my house, when. But my house, when Fremont burned, right up in the hills of Yucapu burned, I had a mud up against my house.
Yeah, you, we, they put block, those cement barriers there.
Yeah, it flooded through there. So where's all the water gonna go from my side?
Can answer that.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll see when we can get you an answer, alright? David, could you come back up here and see if you can give us a solution to this?
Well, everything is designed to, all the yards flow to Vivian.
Quick comment, can you make sure you're projecting into the microphone?
You need to speak in the microphone.
David, we need to make sure you're projecting to the microphone, that way it picks up for both those on the. Make sure you're speaking into the microphone, that way it pulls up onto those that are on that.
Okay, anyway, everything drains towards Vivian. All the streets have to drain towards the street going in the middle. Everything flows down to Douglas. Take that, Ben, please.
The pen?
Yeah, the laser pointer.
Oh.
Travis, help him, please.
There you go, the light's up here at the top.
Okay.
Thank you, Travis.
Everything drains to the streets, everything. This all drains and calculates drain out this way, everything drains down into the.
But he's up in that far north corner.
It's in the corner, up at the top.
He's up here, okay? Nothing I do down here interferes anything that he does up here, nothing. And if he's worried about somebody coming here, that block wall is only, was supposed to go along this side, up that way and down that way, not around his property ever, okay?
But he's, he's, I think he's speaking on the other side of Fremont. When it rains really bad, it comes across.
Yeah, there is a, they're up in this area where you can't see here, there's like a catch and basin on the other side of his house. Everything catches into there and goes down to this portion here.
Is the drainage, though, gonna come down and sit against that fence?
What fence? This fence? No, no.
I mean, there's not gonna be mud or anything that's gonna come across there?
No, not from my project. I can't save for other projects, not from this project.
Putting up whatever you're putting up, it will be hitting, it could be stopping that from flowing.
Well, this drainage ditch is approximately about, from the level of this and the level of this fence, this drainage ditch is approximately averaging about, probably about a good seven, eight feet lower than your elevations from here or here. Okay, so this is relatively low compared to the homes that sit up here and the homes that sit back here. This is like a V ditch, it goes like a big V ditch, okay? And we're proposing to put all rocks to control the flow of water, so there is no erosion. Because if you put a block wall up here and you don't put any control of erosion down here, that is, that's eventually gonna undermine. Ten years, fifteen years from now, nobody's thought about that footing that's gonna be there, okay? That's gonna undermine, I'm gonna tell you that right now, okay? So when we put all this rock basin in here, it's actually controlling the flow of water and the drainage ten times better than what was first thought of.
Okay, Farmin, doesn't that Fremont right there, does that flood there?
There is a, an underdrain crossing on Fremont at the corner of Avenue D and Fremont. But that is, there's a, there there is a segment of that channel between this development and that drainage inlet that is not within the project, this project footprint.
Right, we understand that. I mean, it's not his project problem, but is there something that Dave could do to help alleviate this without getting into big expenses for him?
Well, as part of the, as part of the hydrology study for this project, it doesn't, there's no, there isn't a nexus for improvements at that, at that intersection due to this project that's before you tonight.
So there isn't anything he could do to help by putting even a block wall at that one corner wouldn't help any? David?
What, you mean put a block wall from, let me get this thing, put a block wall from here to here?
Or?
That looks like that would be bad.
Huh? I don't understand, because.
I don't either, Dave, I'm just.
My property. This house here, I think it's the ones with all the abandoned cars in the front yard, is that the same home?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Okay. So this will control erosion, that planet we showed is gonna control everything and make any drainage issues that we had go away on any of these twenty-two lots. But the problem is, I can't put all that rock quarry, bays down there, because that's gonna cost me roughly about sixty to seventy thousand dollars and absorb the cost of putting the block wall on that side. But the block wall on that side, that runs me about eighty dollars a linear foot, okay? The vinyl runs me around thirty dollars a linear foot to get a hundred mile an hour rating.
I don't think that that's the problem.
So that savings I plan on putting into the rock, so I can get more of a, more of a landscape, kind of a pretty look for the, you know, for the whole project.
Why wouldn't, I can't see putting block wall down that whole north side, personally, I mean, no. But I didn't know if there's any, anything.
If the city wants to accommodate something, to put some sort of block wall around this neighbor's, I will be more than happy to do whatever the city recommends for around his lot.
For me?
We can review that as part of the grading plan, just.
Would you please?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to know what the, yeah, okay, so the resident that this affects is good with that?
Yeah, I mean, that's my whole thing, I just.
Okay. I'm just worried, I just thought the runoff and everything might be affected by any wall.
Figuro and stuff, but he's on the south. So if you guys posted a picture of his stacker blocks in one of the pictures that you had, all the runoff's pretty much coming down in his yard steps down right at the end of the pole.
But it's all graded to accommodate the flow. That whole thing's being redone. The whole grade up there is being, you know, redone. We're taking a ton of dirt out of there, and everything's gonna be lower. So there's no effect on any runoff from this project to the home, to this home up here in this corner. In fact, everything flows this way into that way.
So we'll just make that so that the city will work with the applicant and the homeowner.
I think at this point, at this time, we could, we could beat this up, but I think if we put this in the hands of the best engineer in the state, Farmin, if he can work with the landscaping on this, Dave, would you work with Farmin and see if something can be?
And if he's worried about people using this, we have no problem putting some barrier gate up here. We just did it on another project for a trail, we put a barrier gate up here.
Just to bury, just one, yeah.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
With a lock on it.
Yeah, I'm sure Farmin can handle with the landscaping and coming up with a solution for both parties.
Mr. Chair, as part of the grading plan review and the inspection, we'll review the wall idea that came up. And also, as part of the improvements to that channel and the rip rap installation, we can look at possibly some transition improvements from that inlet at the corner of Avenue D and Fremont to where the beginning of the, these drainage, where the drainage improvements begin for this project.
Okay, thank you. There you go, problem solved. Okay, commissioners, to close the public hearing, it moves the commissioners. Any of you non-commissioners that didn't, were able to view this, you have any comments? Chris?
I, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't able to hear the last comments of the resident. My only comment is, is there any other properties that would share this resident's concern? Or is he in such a unique setting that it's only his property?
Not that we can see, no.
Alright.
What was that, Chris? I'm sorry.
He said alright.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's it, guys, that's all I have.
Okay, Bart, you ready?
Yeah, no comments, no questions, thank you.
Okay, Kathy?
No, I'm good.
Lloyd?
My only comments, I love these floor plans, and I love that you've gone to single story for all of them. I think that is just a big, a real help to a lot of the concerns that were, came to us the first time. So I, and I really, I really wanna build one of these houses myself. I like this. Yeah, I love that, so thank you for that.
For the audio, since it wasn't picked up, David Klein iterated that there's a few other projects that feature single story, like this project.
Okay, well, at this time, I'd like to thank David for working with this issue with the neighbor. So we all worked together, we can solve a few problems. This whole world needs to do this. Okay, at this time, we have any motions?
I'll make a motion.
I'd like to make the motion. Go ahead.
No, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, or we recommend for approval, the case number twenty dash zero four zero would be considerations brought up by the resident who appeared at the meeting and that would be done in conjunction with our, in coordination with our city.
Yeah, okay. This is about what we discussed, okay? Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Wolf? Commissioner Rettstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Markarian?
Aye.
Commissioner Flins?
Aye.
Commissioner Brazee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Work?
Aye.
And Chair Algauer.
Aye. So we've done away with block wall, we're just doing that vinyl, and then Farmin's gonna work with him on that corner.
Just the revision is.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Thank you for working on that project for us.
And Farmin, are you familiar with the resident behind you? Have you guys spoke before?
No, but I can get his information on the way out.
I would just like for you to have a little communication between the two of you, that'd be great.
Come on, fingers. Okay, the draft of the seven-year capital improvement program.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening. Again, each year as part of the budget preparation process, the city staff will prepare the draft capital improvement program for the upcoming fiscal year. The, the agenda report before you includes an agenda report that was presented to the city council at the last city council meeting. That agenda report has a lot of information, but essentially, the recommendation as before you tonight is that the planning commission review that draft seven-year capital improvement program and adopt the findings as contained in the agenda report. The California government code requires that each local jurisdiction submit the draft capital improvement program to its planning agency each year in order to determine if the proposed projects are recommended for planning initiation or construction during the upcoming fiscal year and to ensure that they conform with the general plan and that all the applicable plans and elements are are parts that are, or parts that are conforming with the general plan. I do wanna just briefly mention that as part of the draft capital improvement program this year, or, yeah, this year, not proposing any new projects, and the reason for that is that currently we have a large number of projects that are in either the design, environmental review, or construction phase. Again, you can see on page, on page three of the agenda report, there is a graph there that identifies all the funding sources for the capital improvement program. And I just wanted to point out that that graph identifies the funding sources for all the projects that have been prioritized by the city council over the last eighteen years. And I did wanna emphasize that over forty-eight percent of the project costs have been covered by either federal or state grant funding or partnerships with other agencies where the city has partnered with those agencies, and those agencies have contributed towards the construction or the development of those projects because those projects are multi, they provide multiple benefits to the community. In the agenda report, it does include the list of projects that have been completed in the current fiscal year, projects that were started in the current fiscal year and will be completed next fiscal year, and also a list of all of the projects that engineering staff is currently working on. They are separated by the different types of projects, either they're drainage improvement projects or street improvement projects or park and public facility projects. I won't go into detail on those projects unless the commissioners have any specific questions on those projects. But other than that, that concludes my presentation. And again, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission review the draft seven-year capital improvement program and adopt the findings as contained in this agenda report.
So how long do we have to study this?
It's at your discretion.
You got an email to you.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, commissioners, any comments? Let's start with you, Bart.
You mean Markarian?
Bart Brazee, do you have any comments?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, Chris, do you have anything?
Yeah, a couple of questions. This is my first time ever seeing a development plan, and I wanted to see if I can compare it to the last one. Is there any way we can get a copy of the older one or maybe a summary of how it's different from the previous one?
Farmin?
Sure, we could, we could make that available.
But we, I mean, we'd have to postpone this till the next meeting.
Well, this, the draft, this proposed draft CIP is included, it will be included in the final budget document that's gonna go to the city council for review and approval on June twenty-second. Again, the, if the intent of the review is to ensure that these projects conform with the general plan, we are not proposing any new projects. So the, all of the projects that are included here were included in last year's plan that was reviewed by the planning commission.
You hear that, Chris?
Yeah, that's one half of it. The other half is, what if there are plans that we should include in here, and they're not?
Are you referring to specific projects that should be included?
Correct.
So the, the projects that are included now are the ones that are, that are being recommended to the planning commission and, well, to city council based on the available funding and the projected revenue for next year. And again, another reason why we are not proposing any new projects other than the fact that we have a lot of projects that are in process is that, based on the recent economic situation, the, with the sales tax and also the, the limited revenue, limited revenue from the development impact fee program, we don't have the capability of adding any additional projects at this time.
How, when was the last one done?
It was done May of two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, so every year, my point, Chris, is every year we get this, so these are the new projects. So there are, I mean, this is the same as last year.
Alright, so there's a two thousand nineteen seven-year capital improvement program?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so, and then you're saying that two thousand twenty, the one that we have right here, the draft, is the same as the two thousand nineteen, correct?
There was no changes made.
With, it's the same projects, the only changes that have been made. With, it, it's, it's the same projects. The only changes that have been made are the, are the funding sources. The funding sources have been revised based on the revenue, uh, the actual revenue for the current fiscal year and the projections for the, of the revenue for the upcoming fiscal year.
Oh, so I understand all of that. My question is, would we as planning commissioners have any input on what projects should be in here or shouldn't be in here, since we're approving this?
So those, the projects themselves that are prioritized are through policies from city council. This action for the capital improvement program is to confirm that it is consistent with the general plan. So that the projects are proposed under the CIP further implement or, or are consistent with the general plan. And so that would be the finding associated with the recommendation for the seven-year capital improvement program. And then as part of that finding, once that general plan finding is done, it is wrapped into the overall budget for the fiscal year for city council to take action on.
I see. Well, that makes it a lot simpler. So all we're doing here, our job is to see if there's anything that is contradictory or conflicts with the city's general plan, right?
Correct.
Okay, and, and the staff can obviously tell us that, so there's not much for us to do with this?
Yeah, Travis can verify that.
Alright, well, in that case, if that's all we're supposed to do, then I guess it's done.
Okay, we're done. Anybody else? Kathy, everything you want to weigh in on?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Well, thank you. Lloyd? And the lovely Denise?
Nope.
Okay, so we need a motion, right? Ben, you need a motion to?
Yeah, to um, the, the review and then the finding that it is consistent with the general plan.
Okay, you got that?
Got it.
Got it. She made a motion. Do we have a second? Lloyd?
I'll second.
Well, thank you, Kathy. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I'll do a roll call.
Roll call.
Commissioner Wolf? Commissioner Rettstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Marcarion?
Aye.
Commissioner Felens?
Aye.
Commissioner Brazee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Work?
Aye.
And Chair Algauer.
Yes, aye. Okay, um, Ben, do we have any announcements?
Um, we will have a July first um, planning commission meeting and so that's, there'll be a few items for that one as well.
Okay, with that, I want to thank all your commissioners on the phone and those who showed up. Thank you very much and have a safe and sane Fourth of July.
Well, we'll be here before then.
That's it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Good job, guys, thanks.